Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, March 25th. Call to order at 6:34 PM. Review of surplus equipment request, Public Library, fourth read. I do not have any concerns. Thank you for giving me a little longer to finish getting through those. I have no concerns this time. And you said the guitar is already gone.
It's already been transferred to the school.
Gotcha. And some of the Dells are HB's, but it's not. It's minutia, but... Would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, so it's not on our regular forms. I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I keep scrolling, looking for it.
Looking forward to it because we've been working off a photograph and a memo. It doesn't have anything, the other information that's on there related to recommended disposition of it or value.
Do you want me to?
Do you want to have her submit? Will I brace that up?
Yeah, just wanted, so we can sign off on an official form and have her sign that she's requesting it be... I mean, I have no problem with the items there. I just want to make sure that there's a recommended disposition and a dollar amount attached to some of these, if there is any.
Perfect.
We could approve it, but approving it off of a picture. Should have thought of that the last couple of times we read it, but...
That's fine.
What does, while we're doing that, because I meant to ask this and I forgot, what does pictured but not available mean?
It just means that there's other things in that photo that are not being surplused.
That's what I was saying, so like, those are actual, like, employee jackets.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, because I'm going, why aren't they available?
Exactly.
If we're getting rid of them. Sure. We're just going to get a form, thank you. Yeah, so we got one and we'll just finalize it next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
All righty, we'll carry it for next meeting. Review of surplus equipment request, recreation, third read.
I have no concerns. Did you get the, there was a question about the fence. Did we answer that one last time? My brain is not recalling if it was the back fence.
The back fence. So the question was in regards to the second field at Veterans?
So it's all of the fences?
All the fences.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was part of it as well. All right. And that was the only question I had.
So it is.
No further questions from me? Jake, would you like it as two separate motions?
I have no preference. Brian, do you?
No. Make a motion to deem the Recreation Commission surplus property, including tennis courts and fence at Veterans Field, as well as additional dugouts and fence at the same location.
And bleachers. I don't know if you need that, but...
All items will be disposed of in various manners, recycled or thrown away.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Review of the Draft Landscaping Services invitation for bid.
So believe we're just carrying that in case there was more reflection or thought on our proposed change in scope? No, I had my questions answered last time.
Same.
And if something does evolve in the next few weeks, we can always issue an addenda.
I just want to scroll through. Can't remember if I made a note for myself on this or not. Apparently I did not. I will stand corrected myself. I do not have a note somewhere in there.
You have something, Jake?
Yes, I do. Actually, twenty, of our packet, twenty-seven, or twenty-two of the IFB. The second whereas is of 2021. That is correct. That is not correct, right?
Yeah, we will correct it as a twenty-five.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you said, yes, it is.
No, I was...
I got you.
I was following you, yep.
And at the bottom as well, on the next page, the signature page.
Okay, so we'll make those revisions?
Yeah, well, just caught my eye. That's all I got. Nothing of significant materiality. Because it's a sample anyway.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's just a sample, it's not an actual...
That's all I had, I'm good.
You're good with it?
I am.
Would you like a motion?
I would.
Make a motion that we release the Town of Irving Landscape Maintenance Services invitation for bids, procurement number 202403, with a bid deadline of Tuesday, April 30th, 2024, at 2:00 PM.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Review of meeting minutes. March 13th, 2023.
Motion to approve meeting minutes from March 13th, 2023, as written.
Second. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sir, I'm going to abstain from this vote. I don't recall being present in the gallia for that particular meeting, so...
Thank you. Minutes of February 26th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve minutes, February 26th, 2024, as written.
I will second. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstention?
I will again abstain as I wasn't present for that meeting.
Noted. Minutes of August 29th, 2022.
I apologize, I did not get a chance to finish going through those.
Okay, I did not either, so we'll carry those. There's a bit there.
Yeah, it's a long meeting.
It was. Filing for intervenor status on the federal, the FERC relicensing process for the Northfield Mountain Project.
Just emailed over a slate provision. That was just a modification to page three regarding the assessors' information. There were some placeholders and a couple corrections that we wanted to make.
So the question is, do we want to file?
Correct.
And if so, does this reflect what we want to?
Correct.
Send.
And if you choose to, there's a section for contact information for who you would want notified of any official matters. We can have as many officials that seem relevant. One may be the EMD as it relates to Farley and the Earth and Dam. Another may be the Historical Commission as it relates to culturally significant sites that may be on the property. Things like that could be included.
I certainly think the EMD would be appropriate to add in addition. I see Europe listed in primary, which I believe is appropriate, but...
So any discussion around whether we want to or not file? We did last time.
Correct.
Yeah. And then we shared, which is the second part of this, we shared in legal fees.
Correct.
With the, for this.
Yeah, I don't see any, I don't see a downside to doing it again. I'm not sure there's a huge swing of an upside of being part of it, but having, having a voice as part of it. Even though, I know the last time we went through, we went through this process of looking at the license and looking at the application, very little impacted Irving as far as recreational and those aspects of it. But I still think it's, it is a big part of the town. So it makes sense to be on that list.
We as much have interest in their continued operation as well, so balancing that, right? With our community peers here.
I'd hate to get to some point in the future where we needed a voice and didn't have one.
Yep, I agree with you. So then, we talked about adding EMD to that versus having you needing to dispense information, I think, any, you know, recreation, historical...
So you want EMD, historical, who else?
Uh, rec.
Recreation, okay.
Although I may not necessarily apply here, but just in case.
Okay. Another potential may be conservation?
Yep, definitely. Um, the assessors, if they wish to, I know they've furnished information and they're, they interact with them regularly in a different avenue. But if they wish to, I don't have an opinion either way, so we can always ask them and add it if they do. Before we send it. So the only thing I noticed was the dates in the past, is that right? Am I reading that wrong? The intervenor filing date?
No, it has to be before April 22nd.
I'm sorry, we're not in April yet, are we?
No, no. No, it's still March.
Then we're fine.
We still, we still have just, just under a month, so should we...
Time's not flying that fast, thankfully, okay. All right, never mind then. Anything else? Do we want to review it another time before we do it, or are we comfortable with it?
Do you need a conclusion on the ask of the assessors before you vote to file it? Or we can have that amended after?
I mean, I don't think we need it before it's filed. I mean, I don't think we need it after that's changed or not.
Okay.
I think we can say, you know, as written and amended for appropriate contacts. I mean, you know, I don't think it's...
Sounds like you're making a motion.
Fair, all right.
Just authorize the chairman of the Senate.
I'll make a motion that we file the motion to intervene for the Town of Irving Massachusetts in the FERC relicensing process for firstly, Hydro LLC, Northfield Mountain LLC, and authorize Chairman Smith to sign the letter on behalf of Ford and the Town after updating the contact section as appropriate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And then participating in the shared legal costs, FERC legal costs. And I'm still looking at the letter, looking for the next section. Okay.
This is 2,500?
Correct.
Believe that was the same shared last time?
Yeah, correct. It's 25 from each of the towns, of the four towns, and FERCog has also, from the executive council, agreed to match with 10,000.
So they're matching the towns' contributions, basically? And this would come from our legal service fund, I would assume?
Correct. That's where it came from last year.
I mean, if we're going to file for status and may have a voice, then...
We're participating, right?
Yep. I guess on the same vein, move that we partake in the legal costs related to the FERC relicensing process in the amount of $2,500.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Rest of business is joint. I believe I covered everything else?
Yep. Correct.
All right, I'll move, we adjourn for seven minutes here and we'll resume the session.
Yeah, I won't check in that.
Thank you. A little recess until 7:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you. See you.
But Jackie probably knows off the top of her head how many dollars, down to the penny.
So we use approximately forty-five to fifty thousand dollars a year for mostly exemptions, a few small abatements. So we currently have excess capacity of, excess overlay of about two point one million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And I just, the difference between last year and the, it was a hundred thousand dollars and we ended up with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the overlay is usually a direct result because we flatlined the new growth. And so when the new growth comes in, you've already spent, you know, all you've raised and appropriated all the funds you're going to do, and that's usually where I stick the excess in the overlay, so that, you know, we have a little bit left of unspent levy capacity. So that's why there was a difference between the hundred thousand and the one fifty. Also, the overlay balance line item is where the recapulation sheet uses it to balance the tax rates so it winds up on an even penny.
Thank you.
And I was just gonna say, and that's every year that it's being maxed out, right? Normally? Because they're usually well above what we budget, the amount deposited.
So when the tax, when the tax classification hearing happens, the assessors tell you how much is in the unspent levy capacity. It's a little late in the year to be having a town meeting, so usually it has been past practice to stick the extra in the overlay. It's common among cities and towns to do that. And then that's under the assessor's authority, but yeah, that's what it is. It's usually because it's late in the year and we have the, we have the values finalized and the new growth number finalized. They usually happen together.
Thank you.
Yeah, the reason I asked is I'd like to, you know, drop that down to the fifty thousand. And the reason being is to make sure that we, at least putting in enough to cover what we anticipate using for abatements. And I know we have, you know, in your, in your memo, you talked about the ATB pending cases. However, an extra fifty thousand or sixty thousand on top of the two point one million is like throwing pennies in a wishing well and hoping that it'll pay the bill. I'm not too concerned about dropping that down to fifty thousand from a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand or even two hundred. If we get to a point where ATB cases are finalized and we know what, you know, the outcomes of those are, then we can plan accordingly. But I'm not, I'm not certain that year over year, right now, budgeting for FY twenty-five, that that fifty thousand will make a substantial difference in the outcome of whether or not we can fund any findings out of those cases.
I just want to caution you that the overlay is the one, if you, if you keep it that little, it's not an exact, like, hundred thousand. So I might go in there and to balance the tax rate, the recapulation sheet module might say, I need sixty-seven thousand dollars. Or it might say, I need forty-five thousand dollars, which is too little, and then I have to jump up to the sixty-seven thousand. It's just the way that it is. So the assessors did meet tonight and they did make a recommendation to cut it to a hundred thousand, which gives us a little padding on, for, if I get an abatement off of the fiscal twenty-five taxes that, you know, a real estate abatement or a personal property abatement, not just exemptions, then we wouldn't be dipping into the excess overlay. And the Department of Revenue sets certain standards. If you don't have enough in your overlay, they won't certify your tax rate. It's, it's what they hold you hostage to.
What is that standard for Irving? What's that amount?
It changes. It's a moving target. They don't tell you. They just say, well, that isn't enough in your overlay. We'd like to see more. Now, they're aware that we have a tax liability potential with our pending ATB cases that we're waiting on, plus the two years that we have for twenty-three and twenty-four because they filed today. So they're going to want more than just what we're using, you know, as an, as an effort of good faith. Technically, the law says you're supposed to have as much in your overlay as you have tax liability, including your pending ATB cases, but we do not, so.
So what was that number then for like FY twenty-three or FY twenty-four?
For, I, I put in the hundred and fifty and they didn't question it. I, it's not like they come back and say, they come back if there's not enough in the overlay, basically. They don't come back if you put more in there.
Just mentioning that two point one million sounds like a lot of money in overlay, but the potential exposure is roughly twenty million dollars. Now, we definitely don't feel it's, you know, very unlikely the appellate tax board would find against us a hundred percent. It's very unlikely. Hasn't ever happened. And I don't expect it'll happen. But that potential is there for up to about twenty million dollars. It's like the fourteen or so, plus eight and a half interest since, back in two thousand nineteen or something. It adds up. So we've got about ten percent of our total exposure in there. Looking at it that way, it makes the two million look a lot less.
Yeah, well, the two million's not going to cut it if that happens. So, and fifty to a hundred thousand is going to move the needle as much as we're going to need to by far.
You're right.
You mentioned the forty-five and sixty-seven example. So you can't do forty-five Y if we have a balance of two point one?
I'd be getting into the excess overlay, which it was my understanding we were just going to save that for the potential, at least, if we, if they found in favor of first light that we'd have something to start with to stop the clock ticking on the interest, which keeps accumulating. Once you make the effort to start, then it stops that. We could dip into the ex, well, it's all one big, it used to be by years, but now it's all big, one big thing. So you could go, go into that. But I'm just cautioning you that the Department of Revenue might say, we don't like that you've only put fifty thousand in your overlay when you're spending fifty thousand every year for your exemptions alone. That doesn't leave you any leeway for anybody that feels they're over-assessed and they file for an abatement and we find that that's true. It doesn't give us any, any room to adjust it.
Excuse me, I'm trying to separate the two, though. So from a process standpoint, we could, because we have a two point one million in there now and we only need fifty a year, so that could carry us at zero for a long, long time, ignoring the ATB cases, right? So from a process, you can do it, but that doesn't mean it's a good choice, but you would be able to do less than what we spend?
You might be able to, but the Department of Revenue is going to caution us that that is not good business practice. It'll,
If we didn't have any ATB cases and had two million, they wouldn't, would they?
If we had no pending ATB cases, the assessors could declare the overlay as surplus and release a certain amount and the town could spend it.
Okay.
We've just been holding it because we don't know what's going to happen with our pending ATB cases. Also, I do want to caution you that although we have four years pending with first light that we've been to trial on and are awaiting a decision, we have two more years that we now have to go to court with again.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the process questions versus the current state piece of it.
And I will also say that out of that overlay, because we have a structured tax agreement with our two large-scale solar companies, we guesstimate what their tax bill's going to be. It's a guessing game because it has to be included in the value. So I estimate as close as possible to what I think the tax rate's going to be, and then I set the value. If, and I'm over a little, because if I'm under, we have to send a supplemental bill, which is more work for everyone. So there's usually a little bit of, of the overlay that gets used in that to, because they are a structured tax agreement and they have a certain amount they're paying. So if we've over-assessed them, that comes out of there.
And your example of if we didn't have enough of that forty-five and someone had an abatement that they deserved, we still have the two-one. That's the pull we pull from. I know it's not, it wouldn't be self-funding within the year, but it would be, okay.
We could, it is, it is excess and we could go into it.
Thank you. Other questions on the overlay piece?
Well, I, I understand Scott's thinking on this. I'm not sure I'm comfortable going as low as fifty. I was, I was thinking we could cut it to one fifty or potentially one after hearing Jackie's input from the assessors. As Dan pointed out, I mean, there is a large liability there. And I know whether it's fifty or a hundred and fifty, it's dropping coins into the fountain of a, of a twenty million dollar liability. I get that. But I still think we should consider making sure that we're putting something in there to prepare each year.
Whatever number we come up with, whether it's a hundred or fifty or a hundred and fifty, I think a hundred's the round number, but, but instead of two hundred, cut it in half to a hundred, whatever we come up with, playing with the overlay or the, the unfunded public liability there for retirement, those are not sustainable revenue sources. You know, there's, it might work for this year, but just to keep in mind, if we want to fix things long-term, it's probably not by cutting overlay and OPEB for, just my thought.
Well, I mean, these are raise and appropriate funds. We're putting them somewhere to save them. One for potential liability, which hopefully we don't end up with much of, if any, and then don't need all of that and can reduce it, right? And, and, but that, whatever the budget number is, is raise and appropriate. And if we are able to bring that down as a sustainable thing at some point, because we don't have that liability anymore, then it is reliable funding, right? Because it is raise, it's not like we're taking free cash. It's raise and appropriate. Just, just the nuance there. I understand what you're saying. And OPEB, we're fortunate to fund a lot of. We're not there yet, so we can't not fund it at all. I agree with you, but that wouldn't ever get us there. The other piece I was going to say is, I kind of agree with you. I don't know that I think fifty is the right number. But on the other hand, depending on what we talk about deciding to do with the new growth number we budget, if we were to do both, I wouldn't recommend fifty. I would go higher. If we decide not, or depending on what we decide with new growth, whatever we might anticipate ends up actually being new growth, will be able to be added to whatever we budget for overlay, as it was last year. So the, the likely deposit is higher if we aren't planning all the new growth potential. Again, we're guessing, right? Based on prior years into that formula. So there, again, it's fluid and we won't know exact, but that's another place.
Can I, I talk a little bit about new growth? So I have most of the utility forms of listen. Most of our new growth comes from personal property. We don't have a lot of residential new growth. We have a few new houses, but they were at least fifty percent constructed for the most part. And at the low tax rate, it doesn't bring in a lot for new growth anyways. There is some new growth on the utility side as far as National Grid and ever source are concerned, and a little over in the wireless cell towers. I don't know if we'd achieve the forty-three thousand that we got last year, but if you were going to use that for a base number, you could. That's a little easier for me to make up if we don't achieve the forty-three thousand, or might exceed it, but I don't, I don't think so. We had flat new growth from first light. I did receive their formal list and there is no new assets in there. So it's rather limited. I could work on it a little ahead of schedule and get you a potential number on the personal property side so that you would have a better idea, but it would, it would probably take me about a week. But I would recommend using last year's new growth number, which was forty-two and change. And then leave the overlay at a hundred.
Questions on those for Jackie?
No.
No.
Thank you. And maybe just to that point, I think the new growth and the overlay, I would say, I at least look at them as a pair. So if we're going to budget the forty, some level of new growth, then don't reduce the overlay as much, depending. So I don't know what path we want to take or what we'll think makes sense for those two pieces. But I would, that would be my recommendation, whether we plan some new growth or leave, or put overlay at fifty and don't plan new growth, or plan a hundred in overlay and plan new growth, whichever way we get to the similar formula. Because if, if there's about fifty in new growth, then if we don't budget it, it's potential in the overlay. And if we do, then let's make sure we don't short the overlay that much, is my thought process.
We did one or one fifty last year. It was a hundred last year in the overlay, correct?
Budgeted a hundred.
Right, and then the new growth was the balance.
Actual was, was one fifty.
Yep.
I got it listed here as miscellaneous, non-recurring things that we sell through any, any revenue like that. I think last year was thirty-something thousand-ish.
Where was that?
I don't know if we sold anything.
Was that on the, was that on the recap or local receipts?
I don't know where it is.
Maybe on the tax recap. But,
Again, it's not, not a planable thing.
Nothing of substance.
No?
Okay. If we have a, we have one vehicle to sell, that may bring in a couple thousand dollars, three, four, five thousand.
Anybody else on what you'd like to put in? Pencil in for the spreadsheet? I mean, you said, you said fifty, but then we didn't, we hadn't talked about new growth yet. I don't know if you had an opinion on new growth as well.
I had other things. I just figured you would, you would ask other people if they wanted, had ideas on those lines as well. But yeah, I have other thoughts.
Did you have a new growth thought that was?
I had fifty.
Okay. Counting for that, too?
You know, hearing the conversation, trying to come closer to the, the flat line, maybe put it at forty. You know, the, the goal I was looking at is, and, and I know it's not long-term sustainable. I mentioned this last year. But trying to balance a deficit of three sixty-five, I think, three sixty-five, oh fifty-five. So I was looking for pockets of where we could do that. Brian was, you know, had mentioned in, in the memo, these various things that we, we don't utilize, local receipts. They've been higher than we've ever, you know, that we've allocated for in the summary sheet. You know, I, I would suggest bumping that up to three hundred, adding sixty thousand on that. OPEB, I know Jen's here, she could probably talk to that a little bit more. But when we had talked about it extensively in previous years about dropping that number, it's a healthy number right now. And I think if we had kept it where we were, I think at one point we were putting in three hundred thousand dollars a year and we would have had it fully, and it was projected to be fully funded in like eight years or something like that, or ten years. I know that reducing that puts us out a little bit further, but I also know it doesn't put us in jeopardy of not being able to get there. So I was going to suggest that we drop that down. I'm not a hundred percent sure on the, the dollar amount. I mean, you could throw out, drop it all the way down to fifty. I, you know, not a huge fan of that number, but I was just trying to figure out, how do we balance this without doing deep cuts?
It's only a hundred right now, right?
Right. There's also line items that I looked at, too, but we can talk about those whenever you're ready. So there is all of the things in the memo. It's, you know, the, the line item from the school that they had already said that they were going to be trying to finalize tomorrow night, overlay, OPEB. If we're down to looking at pennies on the dollar, I know we said capital stabilization, we put a line item of seven fifty because it's a nice, it's a nice even number, but we're taking that out of free cash. So I would actually say make that seven forty-seven, one-ten. It's, you know, it's a difference of a couple thousand dollars, but it is what it is. I mean, it's, you know, because if we're looking at line items for a thousand here, five thousand there, twenty-eight hundred dollars is twenty-eight hundred dollars. And, you know, rather than increasing a line and putting a placeholder, that's more than what we, it's freeing up some RNA by doing that. So I, I did go through, just so that people understand the task, and those that weren't watching last week, I also went back through each of the budgets and tried to look back at the items that were requested for FY twenty-four and denied, and to see if we could, what are those dollar amounts? And, you know, we had thrown a couple of those around last meeting, things like the highway position, the cadet position. Those are just two of them as examples. But when you factor in wages and benefits, you could be talking a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars just for two positions when it's all said, said and done. And if we're already trying to close the gap of three point, you know, or three hundred and sixty thousand, increasing that to over a half a million, you know, I couldn't, I was looking at line items and I came up with a, you know, under twenty thousand on first glance of line items that I think we could cut or reduce. It doesn't fit that. So I want people to understand that we're not just looking to cut. I was also looking, going through the task of seeing what can we put back in and can we find a way to fund it? I, I don't see a way to fund it, but I wanted to at least put that out there. But until we dive into the line items, I'll let anybody else talk about what, what they have.
What, Scott, what was the number you had mentioned for local receipts?
Currently, we have, on the summary sheet, is two hundred and forty thousand.
Yep.
And I was saying three hundred.
Before we dive into more or other versions and maybe dive into those, I want, I want to hear them. But I had one question that I don't know if it was addressed or I'm missing it. We increased benefits by eighty-four to allow capacity and just for the fact that we felt we were probably barely budgeted for actual after increased rate in benefits. The benefits for the eighty-four, we think was just enough to cover after the increase, as is.
To provide, I believe, two higher-end plans.
But no capacity after the increase and the expected positions.
No, so the,
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna, my question's gonna be following that, so I might as well. Thank you, Jim.
With the eight positions, if everyone fully covered, it would be one point five, one point five million.
So you all proposed to put eighty-four thousand in. But, but hold on. So the one point five is what was the request was, right?
It was, no, it was one point four two and change. I didn't bring my sheet.
So one-five covers the increased percentage and the positions that we know, and that's it?
Correct.
No capacity?
Correct. But again, I also want to caution you that it's, I'm estimating at the highest rate. So not everyone's going to show up with a PPO family plan. So there's a little bit of room to wiggle.
So the eighty-four that you've incorporated gets us to the eight positions we know could take benefits?
Gets us beyond that. Actually, it gives us three, three additional positions with eighty-four.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we had, that's why we had talked about putting four is putting back in the capacity. The, the new rates ate up the previous capacity and the positions that were anticipated. That's what ate up all.
That's what I'm trying to confirm. Does the eighty-four extra capacity or does the eighty-four get us to budget?
Eighty-four is extra capacity.
Okay.
But I, I have a question regarding that.
And that's not every position. That's the other part.
Does the eighty-four, that capacity, does that include the new positions that are currently being advertised for FY twenty-five? So like the school is advertising for a position. I'm not clear if it's an adjustment counselor or what the proper term is for it. Is that position included in that eighty-four thousand dollars if it's a benefit?
That position, no. Our office wasn't aware of that one.
So that's my concern is although we are building in what we think is capacity, there may be positions out there in FY twenty-five that are being advertised for currently or in the future that there is no capacity for. So that's my concern.
I believe we've been able to confirm if that's the only position that the school's planning that hasn't been incorporated into the eight?
It's the only one I'm aware of.
Okay. So we don't have eighty-four. We have sixty-two or something, say.
Yeah, whatever it is, yeah.
So if you are saying eighty-four is three additional positions?
I guess it's really two.
Yeah, so it's really only two. So we're back to really not having much of a buffer.
And again, but again, it is, is all calculated at the highest rate, the whole package at the highest rate.
Correct.
And if you compare a single plan to, like a single HMO plan to,
It's like fifteen thousand.
Yes, it's a pretty big.
It's about double or more, right?
Yeah.
I'm not too concerned.
Okay. On the other hand, that's positions that we know don't take it and are coming or exist. That doesn't, all possible changes that could occur, that doesn't,
Right, those eight aren't guaranteed, that they're definitely going to take something come open enrollment. I mean, I'll know more in, in a few months, but that doesn't help us now.
But there could be other changes unfavorable as well within the plan base that we already have. So it can go either way.
Right.
But just to be clear, we've never kept more than five plans of high-end capacity in, in the budget. So you're right. But in terms of a cushion, we've never budgeted more than five plans.
Okay. We also haven't had a year where people seem to indicate they chose not to take it because of the situation we're in, knowing we didn't have those benefits for positions that got hired, which is the year we're in right now.
I have no clue why people do or do not choose benefits, but.
Again, I said presumed or it's not known, so.
So in your opinion, you had mentioned you're not concerned with that dollar amount. Once we added the eighty-four to sort of secure the current positions, secure the potential new hire that's being advertised for, and have a cushion of two new plans, should somebody need to increase their current plan or opt-in at open enrollment time, you're comfortable with that amount?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. When is open enrollment? Is that March?
Fiscal year.
July, right?
June or, it's June for fiscal year, July one start.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, back to a baseline of what our costs maybe should be, make sure that number is enough. Jimmy asked a question, but I don't know if you had other ideas you wanted to add as well. Put you on the spot now, but you don't have to. Or anyone else?
Yeah, me, Scott and I were along, thinking along the same lines of the local receipts, bumping that up. I had three hundred, again, now three hundred, three twenty, I don't know.
Yeah, I had, I had it at three hundred.
You had, you had three twenty? Or you're both at three hundred?
One, yeah.
I had a higher number either way, so, oh, I'll get there.
Okay. Do I hear four?
Maybe more. Have you done anything different? I'm not, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot. I just, around the table, if anyone else had anything different or other thoughts as they went through this?
There's, I mean, if you're, if you're opening the conversation to various departments and line items within, I've got a couple of questions or comments on a few line items. But I'll, I'll let you set the pace on when we get there.
Let's, let's just make sure kind of if there's any thoughts or discussion around up or down on the numbers that we're throwing around for revenues. I'd rather kind of maybe not finalize it, but make sure we're kind of in some consensus on those numbers.
So I, I agree with changing the local receipts to three hundred, and I agree with both Scott and Jim about, I just lost my place on my notes, sorry. I just lost my place on my notes, sorry, the overlay, doing a hundred and then doing the additional forty.
In new growth?
Yeah.
Okay, I think you were fifty and forty, right? But either way.
Fifty-four.
Overlay and forty.
Yeah, I had thrown it out lower. And I understand the, the idea of making sure you have capacity without having to dip into the two point one, trying not to trigger the Department of Revenue looking down upon us because we have open ATB cases that we shouldn't be budgeting to use some of our overlay. I get all that, so, you know, and I'm amenable and I, I do understand that people keep throwing out numbers in increments of fifty thousand, but you know, it doesn't have to be. It can be seventy-five, we can put in any number. It's, I always see people jump from two hundred to one hundred to fifty to one fifty, but there are numbers in between if we want to look at some of those as well.
Right. Can I just, maybe you said this Jackie and it went over my head, but the Department of Revenue, if they come back and, you know, they're, they're not gonna give us a number, but they can decide it's going to be under. What are the consequences if they say, no, that's not enough, what do we?
They won't set your tax rate. They feel you didn't put enough in overlay. They will not set your tax rate, they will not authorize the tax rate to be set. And I did hear you mention local receipts. So historically, Deb, Merrill and I work on local receipts together. It's one of the pages the assessors and the accountant do together. And we're usually quite conservative. It's fine to raise it, you probably could, you know, with interest rates being up. We try to keep it close to what it was the previous year. Well, it's a guesstimate, right, because then the actual receipts come in and sometimes they're higher and sometimes they're lower. The biggest one would be motor vehicle abatement, I'm sorry, motor vehicle excise. That's the first one on the page three. And that all depends on how many people buy new cars, so buy lots of new cars, because it's higher excise. And then the biggest other driver is interest from our investments. And it's my understanding that the treasurer has perhaps locked in a better interest rate for us. So there would be more coming from that. Fines and for, fortages are all, they're kind of up in the air, there's hard to tell. I mean, if we have a lot of tickets that get paid or things like that, then that line can go up or down one way or the other. And in the miscellaneous recurring, that would be the one, usually the OPIO settlement is in there. And I'm not sure how that money's gonna be in there now that you have a fund that it goes through. It might be out of there entirely.
The stabilization fund upon receipt.
So that is also one that can go up or down. And the miscellaneous non-recurring, you can't count on that, you have to pretend it's zero regardless. So if you want to raise it, we certainly have some areas that we could increase the local receipts by, but we will have to have justification. There is a section in the recapulation sheet where you must justify whether or not you increase or decrease by ten percent and the accountant is required to put why those, why those numbers changed that much. So it's fine to do it, we just would need to justify why we feel that's a, why we feel we're gonna get a lot more money than we normally do. Did that answer your question, Jim?
Does, thank you.
Get more money than we normally do or budget more than we normally do? Because they're not necessarily the same thing.
They're not, so we get, we estimate and we're conservative, right?
Right.
But then you have your actuals, so your actuals from the previous year come in. And if those are higher than what you're estimating for the new fiscal year, they want to know why, or if they're lower, it's higher or lower. If there's a ten percent swing one way or the other, they require justification in a separate sheet.
Ten percent higher or lower than actual prior year?
Than actual.
Not budget, actual.
Actual.
Okay, our actual is four hundred last year.
But keep in mind, the miscellaneous non-recurring, the thirty-five thousand that you got last year.
Sure, it's not.
You can't, that one you can't count on, you have to pretend that it wasn't there.
Which gets us to the three sixty-something that you had put in our email versus the number that's on the recap.
Okay, thank you.
That answer?
Can I ask, before we move on to the line item, things you're talking about, is anybody kind of keeping a track here with, with overlay and OPEB going down and local receipts going up? We started out at three sixty-five, where would we be now before we start looking at line items? Do we know that yet?
Before, yes, there's multiple people keeping track, I can guarantee you. Before we advise that number, I had a couple. One, I just want to pose the question between do we budget new growth or do we just budget a lower overlay, knowing that new growth will end up in the overlay? And I'm not saying there's a right or wrong. If we don't budget new growth, then, if we budget a lower overlay and new growth, obviously it's maybe more volatile what might end up in there. But even if we budget both, it still could be more that goes in there. So I don't know if there's a preference either way amongst the group. Because if we plan for forty in new growth and put a hundred in overlay, it's similar to budgeting fifty in overlay and nothing in new growth, because it's, a forty of new growth would end up in overlay, so we'd get to ninety.
Yeah, and I was going.
It's semantics a little.
And I was going aggressive, I was going fifty.
I know you were going fifty, forty, and I, and I think, I mean, I'm thinking I'm hearing most people would rather ensure that we're getting near a hundred in the overlay, however we get there.
Yeah.
Whether it's fifty and no new growth is planned, so that ends up there by default, or if it's, you know, firm hundred in the budget for overlay and then planning new growth as part of our funds available. And it's semantics to some degree, so nobody, maybe no one cares, I don't know.
No, I care.
Which way we do it, not, not about the money, which way we do it.
No, I know, I'm just.
I think both ways has its merits and to me it comes down to the voice of experience. So I would say if Jackie's recommendation is a hundred for the overlay and forty-three is what she had said, Scott, not a nice round number, would be appropriate, I think that's where I would be comfortable landing. Forty-three is really hard, it needs to be, I really want to say forty, but.
I agree with you until I look at every other number.
Do ninety-seven for the overlay.
And every other number above and around it is lots of more numbers, so.
I can guarantee it won't land at a hundred thousand on the money, it might be ninety-eight, it might be a hundred and five, it all depends on how you budget, how I, I can balance to the nearest penny for the tax rate, so.
Which is part of why I said, I mean, I personally would lean towards put fifty in the overlay and forget about new growth. And then whatever the number and whatever the amount is there, the assessors will adjust and apply appropriately as, to, to make the numbers work as well as incorporate as much there as we have capacity for. Because, yeah, it might be a hundred, it might be ninety-eight, it might be a hundred and fifty, who knows, right? I mean, it's unlikely I get to be that far off, but.
Do you think it matters to the DOR which way we paint the picture?
I think it does, I think that they would prefer a hundred and count the new growth. I may have forty or forty-three thousand dollars in new growth, I don't know yet. It's really early to be calculating that. It doesn't mean that I can't give you a rough guesstimate based on what I've received for forms of lists by next Monday. I could probably give you a, a good guesstimate, that wouldn't be on the real estate side, but I definitely could somewhat calculate on the personal property side. So you could adjust it to, you know, thirty or forty depending on that.
I'm assuming the FY '22 and '23 larger numbers was from commercial?
Most of our new growth is from commercial. That was probably a little bit of new equipment on, on the first light side and maybe, oh, and two of them were the cell tower installation. So the large-scale solar installations was big, big new growth. I think that was a million alone for one and, I don't know, five hundred for the other one the year before. So those were the big drivers there. I don't really have anything this year, but doesn't mean that I, I've combed them with, you know, I haven't looked through them other than to see if there was like a little bit. And there is a little bit in the utilities, never source and national grid. Some line, you know, some new lines, some poles, that sort of thing. I could probably have a rough, a rough estimate for you by the end of business tomorrow, if I worked on it tomorrow, if that would be helpful.
It's probably helpful if it's significantly different than forty-three and that's what we leave tonight with. If it's in the ballpark, I mean, I think thirty to six, fifty or sixty probably were, were probably close. I don't think we assume to be that, that exact. I don't, not speaking for everybody, but I think if it's not too far off, then don't spend a, you know, outside of normal ton of time on it, but if you see something that's popping up as significantly one way or the other, then it's good to know.
It's a little early in the process for me, but it doesn't mean I can't adjust to do it now, that's all.
More information doesn't hurt. Thank you.
So in the meantime, my brain is starting to settle in the hundred and the forty.
And you just, and I just changed it to forty-three.
Forty-three, I'll, I'll meet you at forty-three if that moves us along.
Forty-three separately. The, we, what are, what are we placeholder in for education just for the sake of the exercise? I think we have like seventy-six and some odd thousand dollars above five point eight million in the ed right now in the spreadsheet, it's like five, eight, seven, six and change. I would just propose we put it at five point eight even as a, we know it's roughly in the ballpark because based on the discussions, it's coming down seventy-something potentially.
You want me to change that to five point eight? We've got Mackenzie here, I didn't know if we could ask.
But we don't, well, Mackenzie did reach out and let Deb and I know some of that and I guess I would just ask if you have any information, I know that it's not finalized, different than taking seventy-something off is probably in the ballpark of where it's likely to land. If that makes sense.
I'm asking.
Okay.
If I have information that we intend to, to reduce it more than seventy-eight, is that what you're asking?
If we, yes, if we reduce our placeholder by, it's about seventy-seven. As a, as a placeholder for a roughly what will change as a reduction, you don't know anything significantly different than that right now and to where it might land, right?
I don't know of anything significantly different other than, and so take this, whether this answers your question or not, a request was made to also make sure that our circuit breaker money was included at the actual amount. Right now, it was a estimate of sixty-five thousand. Our circuit breaker amount is more than that and we know that already for sure. So we did ask to have that included in the budget as an actual amount. So that will most likely adjust it a little bit. That number though, I don't know, again, with other things because we need to vote and because the budgets were slightly different than what was the crest, the request was, that was made, so.
So that's, it's a reasonable stab at it right now, we'll have a better number obviously by next week, but.
And by Wednesday, we're voting this Wednesday, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, so you will get, sure, 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 sure.
Okay, is that, in terms of like how to adjust, so I was just proposing we, we change the total end line to five point eight million even, which takes about seventy-seven off for now, as a, as an approximate adjustment for what is likely.
Agreed, any questions?
I had a question for Mackenzie regarding the budget.
Please, please.
I noticed on special edu, let's try this again, on the special education transportation line, there was only a reduction of seventy-eight thousand. Is that just our bus drivers' salary lines, salary amount?
I believe that was reduced because they weren't sure exactly how much it was gonna finally cost us to run the van when we were gonna get the van going. It's my intention to have the van up and running as soon as possible. We've now tentatively hired somebody, so that ball should be continuing to roll. And I think then, like anything, we've got to trial it for a year and, and see what it looks like. So I believe that was the rationale as to why that, that dollar amount came to that. I think that was a rough estimate based on, yeah, if we have our own driver paying X amount per hour, what could we potentially save?
Okay, and then on, I noticed on a couple of different versions, there's different amounts of grant funding.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming part of what you're speaking about is the circuit breaker, we're in one spot it's sixty-five and then another spot it's about double and that would be that difference of actual versus. Why is there so much fluctuation in the other grants? I guess like, to me, a grant is a grant, you, you get, I understand some of them in the education department do fluctuate a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Are these, are these grants that typically have fluctuating costs every year, fluctuating amounts every year? Or is there something that's special that we don't understand as to why they're changing?
I won't pretend to know what you know and don't know, but I will say that grants can fluctuate depending on how much the government, you know, sets aside for one grant or another. But if you, you can also kind of historically look and see, some of these grants have been around for a long time.
Yeah.
And so they've generally been this amount of money, we can generally say that that's what they're gonna be, yes. But to your point, the different drafts do have different amounts, that's part of the problem. They were not necessarily created the way that the request was made, so there's a little bit of confusion there as to why they were created the way that they were.
Okay.
Which we'll, you know, talk about on Wednesday and, and have to tweak.
Is there, out of, and I, if you can't answer this without looking at them, I totally understand, out of the three options that were sent, do you happen to know which one most closely resembles what the school committee was leaning towards?
Well, so the one that the school committee voted on, it's, wasn't last week, was it? Whatever our last meeting was, sorry, all the days blend together at this point, was the reduction of about seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight thousand, I, I don't have the number in front of me. But since then, we've realized that the circuit breaker money wasn't, wasn't, wasn't adjusted based on what we actually have received. So there's been some tweaks since then. If we're gonna revote it, we might as well clean it up to the best of our ability so that we can present you with the cleanest budget that we can.
Okay.
The good news is the number, I mean, not to speak out of turn, but our intention is the number goes down.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mackenzie while she's up?
Yeah, I got a chance to watch a meeting and I'm pretty sure I heard ninety-six, but I could be wrong.
I'm sorry, what, say it again.
I'm pretty sure it was ninety-six that was thrown out there.
For what?
If you guys do vote for not, not having the second preschool.
So ninety-six was the cost, or ninety-seven I think it was, was the cost of the entire program? Like if, if we, if we just cut the entire cost of that program? But that included the cost of a teacher, a para and all the materials? And the conversation was paras are in short demand and in high need, so it doesn't make sense to reduce a para, we can reallocate them somewhere else. So we wouldn't reduce the entire ninety-seven thousand, I think is the number. We would adjust it accordingly and that's how we came to the number that we came to. The other thought process there was that we are looking to hire a adjustment counselor and the concern was the amount of, the money for benefits. So we were, the intention was to kind of swap one for the other. If we have an extra preschool teacher that could be not necessarily needed, that could potentially open a slot for an adjustment counselor, basically making it a wash as far as the personnel and benefits. We don't, as a school committee though, do a reduction in force, I want to be very clear about that. That is not our purview, so that would be the principal and the superintendent would make that decision.
All right, thank you.
Just so she doesn't have to keep playing, come to the table, leave the table, I did have one question about capital. If that's okay.
Before you do, just on benefits, I think you were here, but just in case, I didn't notice if you were here yet. We do have capacity for that adjustment counselor next year built in right now. And still some, you know, buffer.
Okay, because we were, we were told to kind of pause that until it was figured out, so.
It's, it's in the proposals we're looking at. You know, ours aren't final either, but it is, it has been adjusted to include capacity for that in what we're trying to balance right now.
So do you want us to continue to pause on it? To be honestly, I'm not sure if there's been even any applicants. I don't know where they are in that process. Do you, would you prefer us to just continue to pause on that until we're sure that everything is there? Or do you feel comfortable that there's enough capacity there that if a candidate came in tomorrow and they wanted to interview and hire them, they could do that?
How confident are we with the $84,000 increase in benefits being what we propose? Again, it'll town meeting, town meeting, right? We don't have.
Sure.
But in terms of that being, not that it has capacity, but that that is the total that we will put forth. Like that's not a place we're cutting.
I think we're all looking for a nod from the treasurer.
There's, there's a nod from the treasurer for capacity with the 84 increase. My question is, are we confident that the number for benefits we're going to put forward regardless of any other changes will be 84 higher? The 84 higher benefit number? If we're confident that's the benefit number we're going to put forward, then the answer is yes. You're good to go. Again, pending town meeting approval for the funding, but in terms of budgeted for.
I can't think, I mean, at this point, knowing what Jen had said earlier, I can't fathom that we would reduce that. I do question as we get further along in the conversation if that number would have to be increased. If we do determine that there are positions that were presented or anything that we want to plan on.
I would agree. Anyone disagree?
Just looking at the, Dan, you had asked about the running total, and I know we're not quite there yet, but just putting in just a few numbers, the 43,000 for new growth, the 100,000 for overlay, 300,000 for local receipts, adjusting to the 5.8 million for education and the couple of thousand dollars on capital stabilization. We're still looking at around an 82,000 deficit.
Eighty-two, something doesn't jive because I'm in the positive. Did you include your OPEB adjustment?
I was going to say, I'm at 65,358 with no OPEB adjustment.
I'm at 35,350.
I'm at 165. So anyhow, I don't want to reconcile that yet.
Brian, do you have the same number that I have?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to go with that number.
What's your number?
The only change I didn't make, you adjusted capital stabilization to the 747.
Yeah.
So I left it at 750, but I'm at 85,358, so.
Right.
Make that adjustment.
If you make the 747,110, you're at 82,468.
Negative?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you two gentlemen have in for your other special articles line? What is the dollar?
The only ones that I modified were red.
I haven't touched that.
So you haven't touched OPEB?
Have not.
That was my question. So you haven't done the OPEB?
I didn't know that there was any discussion on changing.
Well, you talked to reducing it to 50 possibly.
Yeah, I haven't wrote that in there because we didn't discuss it.
Because we were taking a, a version and kind of as a starting point. I was just utilizing what, what you were bringing up as a, what would this be, so.
How about this? Can I ask Mackenzie the capital question? She can answer, and then all of us can go back and clear up our numbers.
I think generally the answer is yes to your question, but you're going to be here with us. We'll, we'll have a firmer one before the night's out.
Okay.
The roof. The school is supposed to be looking for 50,000 within the budget. Where are we on that? Because planning needs to start happening and we have yet to get an answer from administration as to whether they have found 50,000.
I don't have that answer. I can certainly look in on that. I don't think at this point that's going to be a problem. But I will encourage them to reach a decision on that and move, move quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Is that what we are waiting on before we make any more?
That's one piece, but no, we need to finish working on the designer selection and the procurement pieces. I'll reach back out to the county.
Okay.
Because they were helping us look through some funding sources.
Okay. And do we have any sort of an idea of what that timeline looks like? We were asked that question and I did not, again, did not know the answer to that.
So one of the options that we had explored or were starting to explore was a regional application for some federal funding that was coming out under the infrastructure, infrastructure improvement bill. And they were looking at a regional app of Montague, Irving, Greenfield and Deerfield, I believe. I believe they've been, they've received some feedback that that presents a more challenging route and they were looking into some other state resources. So I, I will reach back out to see what, what they've learned through that process.
Okay. So they, Deb, to your question, just so I'm sure that I presented the way that you're asking it, you're looking for the, the 50,000 to come out of the FY '24 budget. So that, and we will be able to be in a position to use that out of the, we'll be ready to use that to get going on that. Okay.
Hopefully we'll have a number and can encumber it at least, so then it's.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think for this process, it was, is that likely? So we don't need to also plan for that money.
I believe that is likely, yes, that we will be able to do that. Yep.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. For now, I think we're good.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
I, I had a typo. I found one of them, so I'm, I'm where you guys are.
But go ahead.
Had a positive where it was a negative?
Yep.
Yep, that's what I figured.
Yep, as soon as I saw how far off I was, I found it.
Did the 82,468, did that take into consideration anything for OPEB or not?
No. So we had thrown around the idea, or I, I threw around the idea of dropping at another 50,000 to, to a 50,000. I'm not sold on that, but if we did that, then we're, we're still at a deficit from a balanced budget around 32,468.
I concur.
Okay.
What is it? What's, where are we right now?
If we don't reduce OPEB or do reduce OPEB, which one are we doing?
Amended column is on the far left.
I'll return this in a second.
No problem.
Scott, where were you going to drop the other 50 from?
OPEB.
Oh, the 50, okay. The question was asked.
It's not ideal, and I, I think Dan made the point, it's not ideal because we did some of this last year as well. And we're looking at only being able to reduce those same line items by less, you know, cutting them in half again, and the half-life of those, they run out very quickly. If we go to build the FY '26, are we going to be looking at dropping OPEB to 25? And, you know, at some point, we're, we're going to hit that rock and have to figure out which, which of our budgets are we cutting in order to stay within our, you know, summary sheet of available funds? So I know we're trying to avoid doing a lot of that this year. It's not sustainable. I want those, Dan likes to speak to the camera. We'll speak to the people at home. It's not sustainable. It's going to reach a point where we have to look at, you know, what are we offering? What are we budgeting? What, what does each department look like? And how do we sustain it going forward? Because when we're cutting off the summary sheet, we're cutting off of things that won't last more than one, maybe two fiscal years, and then they're gone. So.
So the question was asked last week. How, how much ahead of the rest of the state are we on OPEB? Do we know? I know we're, I would say way ahead, but it's kind of generic.
I don't know if anybody has an opinion that they want to share, but I would say it's, OPEB is so tied to each city and town's actual retired force and projected retired force, which scales and all of that. Are we doing better on a percentage basis than many and well ahead? I think we might have an expert who can answer that better than me.
We are by far ahead of the curve on most communities. Most communities are not even close to being fully funded. I would say that we are definitely at the top as far as that goes.
Are we, so is it fair to say we're in like 70% funded was about, somewhere in that range is where the actually said we are right now or was last year?
Yeah, I, I could get more firm numbers. I could reach out to Parker if you'd like.
I, I think you sent us something within the last three to six months, and that was what I was kind of getting out of it, but I didn't want to. If that sounds reasonably, 70% funded in terms of the potential liability.
Thank you.
And again, with interest rates changing, it, the numbers and the formulas and the way it's calculated, it all, it all fluctuates.
Thank you. I agree with you in terms of like OPEB and we probably should try, unless it's an exception year, not to budget lower than we feel is a sustainable recurring number because it, it's short-lived, to Scott's point, right? It, it's good for that year, but then you can't do that forever. So. You know, if a hundred, if, if a hundred's the right number, then going to 50 just to go to 50 one time. I'm, I don't think I've heard it all during this budget season that there's this one-time cost that we need to cover in operations budget. So I don't think that makes sense. And, you know, for it to be continually sustainable, we shouldn't go there if we don't think that that's manageable. In my opinion. I was going somewhere else with that, but don't know where it was. Anyhow, so we're around 85, 80 something, depending if you've adjusted the state capital stabilization number.
Yep.
The one I wanted to circle back to, and thank you to the treasurer for the information, because I'm, there's nothing that I did, because I'm just summarizing it. When we talk about local receipts, we have the, we have the numbers over the last few years, which have been well into the 300s in terms of what we've actually had in total. I think it was three, like 260, 320, 360, 368, 370, 360 something. And it has only been going up, and that's less than miscellaneous stuff. Obviously, it's vol- it's variable. It's volatile, it's variable. But the other thing that has changed significantly even since last year is the interest rates. And treasurer Jennifer was able to move, get them to move our interest rate to a much more favorable rate, like times higher, like two times higher or more than we have experienced because of where the, where interest rates are at, you know, in, in, in the world. So, and our operational funds, which is interest that ends up on local receipts, not general stabilization, not enterprise funds, is is something that we could budget higher because of that. And we have a much higher balance in there and on an average basis than we have historically because of the new billing. Where we do the, the estimated bill first and then the final actual. It keeps that balance at a higher level for a higher period of time because of when the funding comes in. So.
For more growth.
What's that?
No, I'm just.
More growth in the interest return, yes. And I had it right in front of me and I scrolled away. I will be back to it in one second.
So, sorry, go ahead.
So not only would I personally feel like we could be more in the 360 range without any real risk, especially because of the interest rate change. I also wanted to talk specifically to how much different that could be, even above and beyond the 360.
Yeah, based on the estimate, I wasn't, or the, the narrative from Brian, I wasn't sure about the background information of the trends. I see the trend growing from 22, 23 and 24, but I wasn't sure how dependable you could still see that same growth because you've got a little more background information on that.
Yes, the team got a lot of information for us in short time, which was great. Because these are, to me, these are areas we don't normally really look at.
Correct.
We don't get into the weeds on these. We just say level from last year and anything from there is upside, right? And we don't plan on it. I think we're in a different place now and we're, we're like our neighbors where we might need to look at these. When I look at the last recap for fiscal 20, well, it's a fiscal 24 recap, but it's last year's receipts, the 360, whatever.
368, something like that.
Yeah, 61 of that is interest income.
Okay.
So basically we go down to your 300 number, that's no interest.
Yep.
So starting there in terms of like last year, getting our rates up in the 4% plus now. Four and a half is what they, what they did, what she was able to get for us on our account. We could be seeing something in the range of 300 plus thousand a year in interest right there. Depending on how the balance fluctuates. So, and last year, as in last calendar year, we had 144,000, which only a small portion of that's on the, on the recap because most of that was in the latter half of last year when, after the fiscal year change. Anyhow, so we had over 144 last year. And to quote Jennifer's information, she said, you know, budgeting 200,000 as a planned interest amount would be, no, not, would probably be even conservative, but reliable at this point based on our interest rate.
So then your number would be upwards of five?
Yeah. Well, yeah, five, because it's 300 without any interest. And if we budget 200 in interest, that gets you to 500. And I'm not saying we should or shouldn't go that high, but I'm saying these are, some of these are reliable things that are.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend going that high, but I think knowing that we have the capacity to use that line to be able to balance it, I think makes sense. And, and also knowing that you might buy, you know, yourself another year or so, because that number's going to continue to grow. And the interest, it can become a reliable offset while we figure out how to do long-term tighter budgeting.
What was, what was the term on that new rate?
And until further notice.
Until further notice? So could be tomorrow, could be 20 years or?
No. So last time we, I, I usually reach out when other banks reach out to me. They're like, oh, we're offering this. I said, well, I'd rather, you know, stay with the co-op. So I reached out and they said we were at 2%. We had been 2% for a very long time. So they got their team together and reviewed and came back with a four and a half percent. And it's, it's among all local governments, so everyone, you know, invests in that, in the bank, will get the, the four and a half percent. They created their new tiers. So if you're over a million dollars, you get the four and a half percent.
That's the minimum balance to keep that?
Yes.
Oh, wow. It's pretty.
That's a low balance.
I didn't want to say it, but for Irving, that's a low number to keep as a balance.
No, I just, I appreciate it. I'm just asking, so I.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have you seen it go down in your time as a treasurer?
Yes, when I first started, we were locked in at 1.25 and then it went down to 0.75, then it went down to 0.5. This past June, it went back up to 2%. And then just recently in the past, we got as of, effective as of March 1st, the four and a half.
I mean. Safe to say that this increase in interest, one, takes care of 32,462.
Exactly why I want to come, I wanted to kind of wrap up revenues and bring this up because this is a significant piece. We've talked about some significant things, but this is a significant potential. I mean, it could be up to 400, but I think the conservative number was two. Because, I mean, on average, it would be, I mean, you were thinking it could be 30 plus per month at this rate.
If we're, if we're going to hold that amount in what we currently have.
Right, and our, and our bank is going to go up and down, so obviously it's not going to necessarily be 33 every month, but.
But again, like you, like you had said, with the, with the new billing of the taxes, it's, it's really helped our cash flow and even being able to keep that amount in the bank and to be able to earn some sizable interest, which is great.
And to your point, is that for six months? Is it for three years? You know.
No, we don't.
But, we don't know, but I doubt it's next month.
Bankers are.
No comment?
None at all, none at all.
So I'm putting it out there. I mean, 500 feels, and if you have any questions, please ask before. If this is the expert, I just relayed the info.
I'm hesitant to go up to 500.
That's fair.
And the reason I, the reason I say that is, I don't want it to give the appearance that we are then building the operating budget on that 500. And to Jim's point, six months from now, two years from now, something happens with the rates, the market changes, and they're only offering us two. And we said, oh man, we built our operating budget with a line there of 500. And we really needed that. And now, what are we cutting now because the rates dropped? We just saw the same thing happen when the rates went up for insurance. And all of a sudden, we have to figure out, you know, we, we lose that capacity and the delta changes so much that we can't offset it. So I'm, I'm hesitant to go that high. I'm more inclined to look at that and say, I know we have an excess growth there. I don't know how long that excess growth will last. Let's use a little bit of that to offset our deficit for this year. Let's use a little bit of that to offset our deficit for this year and balance our budgets that we can put it to the voters balanced. And know that we can fund the operating. Will there be more revenue this year? Absolutely, there will. It'll happen in interest, but I don't want to lock that into the budget. You throw in five hundred thousand on that line item, and it changes significantly. Now you're looking at the budget saying, oh, we have a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar surplus.
Some of those things you were talking about, we didn't do, we might consider doing, and as it's sustainable.
Is that sustainable? And, you know, now if we find out, if we can lock in and we find out that, you know, there's guaranteed terms, you know, five years or so, sure, and then now we can lock that in, now we can guarantee it. Now we can go short-term, maybe we're looking at, you know, utilizing that and the things that I talked about, you know, the cadet, the operative's position. Now they become sustainable line items that we can embed into the, the operating. I'm hesitant to do that and have somebody hired, and then six months later, the rate drops down to two and we go, oops. We can't even afford the person we just hired, you know, three months ago.
My recommendation would be to go conservative, I would say two hundred thousand, but that's just my own.
But, so two hundred makes the local receipts five hundred, which is what he's talking about, even that being too much. So what I, I do have a couple of questions for the group, because I think it helps frame whether, how conservative or aggressive we might want to be within the two hundred. Last year, we had a hundred and forty-four thousand in interest income.
General funds, sorry, one twenty-five.
One twenty-five in the general funds?
Yeah.
Sixty-one of that was shown on the recap, and.
Because it's calendar versus fiscal.
Absolutely, and you said that the rate changed in July last year?
Yep, July first, it went to two percent.
Okay, so. And when were, when did we start seeing the effects of having the more stable cash flow from the, was that now, was it last year?
Like October, really, really when we started that new.
October twenty-three? Okay, so we saw two percent interest for half the year, but we've only seen a few months last year of the adjusted cash flow position. And you said year-to-date was, we've had twenty-seven, twenty-eight, almost twenty-eight thousand, and that was at the two percent rate.
At the two percent for two months, yeah.
And that was just January, February, it wasn't March, yeah. So we had twenty-seven, eight at two percent for two months. So just where does that put you over ten, you know, over twelve months? Even if the rate fluctuated, for context, I'm not saying that.
But there is, there is risk for fluctuation, because we're starting fiscal year, you know, starting July first, it'll be July first to June thirtieth, so there is that room for fluctuation.
Right. Right, because we're projecting three months from now, plus twelve. And then, you know, to your point, it's projecting what is thirty-six months from now, or forty-eight months from now. And that's just why I was saying if it was two percent, or, you know, to give some context of part of the equation of it going up is going to be the interest rate. And it's going to be really significant, and no one's proposing budgeting that. And then part of it is the change in cash flow, which will just generate a higher interest return on average. So, I, just putting that out there for information. I mean, I was in the four fifty range personally, if I put a number out there of moving our local receipts up to four fifty, which would be incorporating about a hundred and fifty of interest, which was mostly at two percent or less without the new cash flow from a last calendar year perspective, right? So if we project forward, a hundred and twenty-five, I said a hundred and forty-four, but a hundred and twenty-five in the, in the general fund.
Do you think four hundred would be too low to estimate?
I think we could estimate any of these, and we haven't talked about line items, whether we're decreasing any or increasing some outside of the elementary school, so. Four hundred balances the budget for sure, I think that was, that was your point. I'm not putting a number, I just, where did I pencil a number in? It was four to five, and I was at four fifty, so, but it's not a right or wrong.
Comfortable with the thought the interest will balance our budget. And comfortable, probably do better than that, but I'm not comfortable guaranteeing it will do better than that. There's a lot of things that could change in the next nine months that.
I mean, I think three, I think three fifty is kind of where our receipts have averaged, and that's what the interest only being in the fifties. You know, fifty to sixty thousand, so very low. So, in my mindset at least, anything over three fifty is just starting to get into better interest rates.
Yeah, and so I don't have a problem with four, four fifty, five hundred. The concern I have is the utilization of that line, once we put it in there. And if we're putting it into the budget, in an operating budget, we have to know that I still, I look at this because it is so new and it doesn't have a history of growth, sustainable increased growth. This is like winning the lottery, where you see the money come in very quickly, but we don't know if it's going to stay. And I'm hesitant to tie that money to, say, wages for positions, because I don't want to have to hire somebody and then terminate somebody a year later because something drastic happened in nine months, that can be more destabilizing to a department than not having the position to begin with. Now, if we can see a trend over the next nine, twelve, eighteen months, and this, and, you know, the the people you're working with at the bank are saying, you know, our projections are, are going out further than that, and we're we're comfortable saying that we won't drop below, say, four, you know, then we can start utilizing that, and I'd like to, you know, look at some of those positions and utilize that in some way, shape, or form. I'm just hesitant to do it right now on the fly, knowing that the rate just changed a few months ago, right, or?
In March, but they also have been really good about backing the rate down. They've never been like, okay, we're going to go, you know, the opposite way.
And my, and my projection is based on two percent. And just a slight improvement in overall cash flow to get, to get a hundred and fifty. You know, that, that's easy to get on two percent.
To four fifty?
Yeah, that's just assuming about two percent on new cash flow, likely will generate that. That's not incorporating the extra, you know, more than double that that we might get from the rate today. Because, because of the volatility of that. But I think to say we'll be below two percent in the next eighteen months.
I can certainly open CDs as well, too, and so that we are guaranteed the, the long-term.
Right, because now we have more of a, the cash flow is different, so we could do that.
Lock it in.
Yeah, maybe short, even short-term, we'll get you guaranteed rate for longer.
Seven-month CD for like five percent.
I mean, if.
So that's why, that's how I got to four fifty, but not to say, because I felt like that was a stable, pretty reliable. Again, we're guessing, but more of a stable, reliable number for a year, a year or two, rather than, I wouldn't budget on the four and a half. Because yes, it could be three and a half in six months, could be three, could be two, right.
I think part of, I think four fifty, between four and four fifty is a good working number for right now, as we continue to go through this process tonight. I think my concern is budgeting too high. I don't want to give residents a false impression that we have solved our budget problems, because we very much have not. And I think we still need to be looking at other ways to drive revenue, whether that's paper throw or things like that. I think this is our second year where we have struggled to balance the budget, and where we've had to cut different things, and thankfully, in both years, we've been able to be creative, so hopefully the impact to residents is as minimal as possible. I don't know how we continue this going forward, and I think if we put in too much of the interest income, it gives a false impression that the budget has been resolved, and it hasn't. And we haven't even talked about department budgets yet, we haven't really touched on prior things that were cut, and how, if those are important, or how important those things are, might be to bring back. We have other departments that are looking to add new staff, yet we've told departments last year they couldn't. So I think we have some other questions we need to answer first before we can settle in and lock in this number a hundred percent. At least that's my perspective.
I think it's fair.
I was going to say, I know Scott mentioned it, and that's, it may be I'm feeling the same. I'd like to see what happens, you know, there's a lot of things that could change very rapidly. What happens in November could drive a lot of things. What, what environment we're in even a year from now. Knowing cost of funds for financial institutions, looking at different markers there, I'm not I'm comfortable balancing the budget with the growth this year. Deb said we have a lot of things, and we have department heads here tonight that all worked very hard to get very lean. I wouldn't be inclined to, based on airline item budgets, I wouldn't ask them to cut further than what's already been done. I'm also not comfortable adding something back in just yet. I appreciate where we're at right now, and I appreciate you working them to get that much better rate, but.
I would also add that, not to miss this point, if, because it just popped into my head that we're doing this. Every piece we've just talked about adding, like receipts and adding new growth and all that, that, you know, some of it was an overlay, but some of that ends up being the free cash that we utilized as the only source for capital this year. So as we move those up, we potentially reduce even further any money out there for capital, because there's no RNA capital. So I do want to not, not miss that in this process either, so the tighter we get, the less there is left over, if you will, that becomes our only source for capital, so. It is still a balloon, right? We're just pushing it around a little bit to some degree.
Well, yes, and I mean, there should have been, last year, there was a hundred and fifty thousand in RNA for free, for capital. And that somehow was just completely taken out of this budget for this year. So there should have been a little bit of capacity, we moved everything into free cash this year for capital. And did away with that, so that a hundred and fifty thousand dollar capacity that should have been there did go to other resources already.
Or library repayment, if you consider that capital or not, it's close, it's a hundred and thirty.
Always been two separate things.
I don't think so, thank you. So, so where did that, did we have a number we wanted to put in for Cali tonight on local receipts? Or where, is there a consensus on what that number would be?
I would say be conservative at four.
I would agree, that was my number.
Okay.
And using four puts us in the, in the black again, sixty-seven. I might have made one more change before, other than you.
You used to have OPEV reduced, because I have us only in the black by seventeen, and that's the difference.
I've gone back and forth with the OPEV, and it gets between like fifteen and.
I've gone back and forth, yeah. So if we don't reduce that, then yes. Then you're at seventeen, five thirty-two.
Yep.
If you don't reduce capital stabilization, it's fourteen, six.
Right.
We're in that ballpark, right?
Yep.
Anything else on the revenues? Because I do think we still want to go through the budgets somewhat and look at some specifics. I don't have anything else on revenues, so.
Nope.
Nope.
Budgets. Anyone who wants to go, please?
Sure, I didn't have, I don't have a ton, I, so I went through department by department, tab by tab, through all of them. Outside of wage increases, there aren't a lot of increases. Yeah, I know there's another piece of the wages that Brian and I were talking about earlier.
I just wanted to note it tonight, and we'll cover it next week.
Finalize that next week. So I was trying to just really go through line by line and say, you know, and I only have a two-year window. Budgeted twenty-three, expended twenty-three, budgeted twenty-four, and then year-to-date. We don't have a long history of how frequently we max out every line item, but there were a few line items that we hadn't utilized to capacity, at least over, from twenty-three, and it doesn't look like we, you know, we may not reach that capacity in twenty-four. Two of them out of highway, professional contracted services was one of them, and I'm looking for just clarity.
That's going to be your line painting, street sweeping?
The last ones come out in May, May, early June.
Last year, we had a timing issue, the line painter was supposed to come in June, and they got delayed till October. So they didn't, the charge didn't hit till this, this year.
So you're saying that's where the discrepancy lies, okay.
Yep.
That was one of them. The other one was highway materials. Sorry, I've got to go back to my tabs here. There's so many of them. Oh, I can't wait till there isn't. Where was I looking?
Highway materials and supplies?
Yes.
So historically, FY twenty-three, it was twenty-nine, seven fifty. FY twenty-four, it was budgeted for four hun, for forty, not four hundred, forty. And the request this year is forty. And expended in FY twenty-three was twenty-two, five five five.
Right, so about seven thousand less, and I don't know if that was a similar. I don't recall.
I don't recall, so a lot of like road building material, any repairs to road structures will come out of that.
Yeah, I just didn't know, you know, so if we're looking at prior to hearing about being able to balance the budget, the smaller deficit with the new, the local receipts. I was just looking at line items, is can we shave literally a thousand here, two thousand there, you know, off of that forty or out of a twenty-five? So that's what I was, that's the process I was trying to go through, and there aren't many line items in any of the budgets, where there's a lot of wiggle room to shave anything, but that was one that I just questioned. It got bumped up to forty last year, do you anticipate using the full forty?
I do, because of the rain, the damage that we've had in the roads, absolutely.
And you think that.
I would rather have you take it out of the tree wardens expense under.
I had that one on there, too.
Under, under the supplies.
The three thousand, you had it at ten thousand, five hundred.
No, I think it was twenty, isn't it? Did we, did we drop that one already?
One more time?
Under tree warden.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was told I didn't have to have anything prepared for tonight, just to show up.
You didn't, I was just going through.
Came with what we wanted.
Oh, you have maintenance services, that's, yeah.
So that one needs to stay where it is.
No, the one I was looking at was tree maintenance supplies. You had shifted five hundred of it down to advertising services, which dropped it to ten-five from eleven.
So we had a delay last year in the planting program.
Correct.
Because of the change in tree wardens.
Right.
And when the drought was hitting. So the tree warden has a list of obligations we've already made that we are working on this spring.
Okay, and so that ten-five will, will be in up by, okay.
A lot of it, yes.
Yeah. Those are just a couple of questions I had, you know, on that, those departments. Those are just a couple of questions I had, you know, on that, those departments.
Any others?
Not for, not for Glenn. Not for me anyways.
Anything for?
I was just gonna say, this is sort of off-topic, but I just wanna publicly recognize Glenn and his crew from. I know the winter was kinda gentle on us, but this weekend's storm was crazy and I appreciate the effort that you folks.
Thank you.
Put into making sure our roads were as safe as possible.
I'll pass it on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was a mess and our roads weren't. Other, any other things people wanted to look at or review?
A question, or maybe the readers, he's being here, maybe I don't understand them because I don't do much with them. But we've got under ordinary expenses, it says counseling and support services, 5,000 appropriated and nothing spent.
Which budget, Dan?
Where are you?
Personnel services.
So we use that to fund mental health services for the police department?
I don't know, it just says 5,000.
That's what I'm telling you it's used for.
And not expended.
Right, we, we had a lapse in the provider. Our initial provider decided to discontinue their business and the select board and chief have engaged a new vendor for that.
Okay, and the other one's right above it. It said medical assessment, 6,500 appropriated, 16, 10 used. Maybe reason for them, it just.
Every time we hire, that's the line item that we do mass DOT physicals. Drug testing, firefighters and police officers have to go for physical examinations before they can be hired. And so that line item covers all of that.
Okay.
So that's, that can ebb and flow from year based on the hiring activity in any of those departments.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see much else in here that was appropriated but not reasonably used.
No, and I have two other line items, if I could.
Chief, could I ask you a question, since you're here? And, and to be clear, I'm not proposing that we make any changes on these, given the conversation, the way it went tonight. I think we're, I don't think we have to do this, you know, $500 here, $30 there to try and balance it. But I just, I did do the process of going through line items and I was just curious. There was only two. One of them is the canine supplies. It's a relatively newer program with, since we brought it back. It's budgeted at 6,000, we haven't come close to using that in 23 or 24. Is there wiggle room to sort of reduce that and still provide enough supplies?
Yeah, I think originally it was budgeted at the 6,000 so we could get the kennel up and running. I believe there's still some work to be done on the kennel. We were looking at possible dog pen at somebody's resident. Thankfully, the officer that took that position didn't need, need that.
Okay.
And so, so that, I, I think it originally was budgeted a little higher with the anticipation of initial costs.
But the day-to-day operation of, of having enough supplies year over year isn't the 6,000.
I would imagine it would not be the 6.
Okay, yeah, and I'm not proposing we make any, you know, major changes to anything, I was just curious about it. And the other one is animal control. How are we utilizing that line item? Because we don't currently have anybody in that position. But we are, we do have a contract.
Right.
So are we paying it out of that line item?
If and when we're billed, yes, that's where it would come from.
But we haven't had much expense there at this point.
No.
I don't think we've used any of the wages that.
No, I have nothing in, in two years, that's why I was asking. It's, you know, it's been pretty dormant, so. Those are the only two line items that jumped out of the numerous line items, so it's the only two that popped up, but, okay, thank you.
I mean, I, I would, I, I don't wanna cut the canine either. I mean, it's a new program, we really don't have an idea of actual costs. I mean, I think we're very fortunate with who has the dog now, that there's not a. But, you know, she, she, she leaves, she retires, I do hope to keep the program going.
Yep.
And we could be in a much different situation if it's a different officer, so. Where we would have to be buying a kennel. Fencing.
Got it.
Things like that for, for the home.
Yeah.
All right, me also.
And I think.
I just wanna clarify, we were not talking about cutting the canine program.
No.
It was a question to a funding, a line item funding.
That's it.
That's all, because I just don't want people to think that that's.
Yeah, I don't want the, I don't want the listeners at home to think that.
Sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Simply is, you know, are we over budgeting to make sure we have enough supplies? But I understand why it was there.
I would also point out to select my ambassador, that, and I think Deb, you brought this up when we first brought the program back, was the. Is it 1,500? Again, I wasn't prepared for a bunch of questions, but I think it's 1,500 that we have for the vet gap.
Yes.
That potentially could be low, you know, God forbid we had an injury to the dog.
Yeah.
That's something to think about too.
Yeah.
You, you have the 6,000 there, you have the 1,500 there. I don't know, maybe you split it, I don't know.
Yep, it's a good point.
And we also have donations and other things.
We have been getting donations.
That, that go towards it, that help offset it, so, but can't budget to always have those.
Donations already, so.
Thanks, Chief.
Is that something that we can create a revolving account for, for, to kind of, kind of like, you know, we have. Special headlines in case there's an emergency in our, for the, specifically for the canine. Dog, for the canine, that, like you're talking about the vet bills, if they were to get hurt, right? There's not, there's not insurance, like we have insurance to cover those sort of things. So is that possible to create a revolving account, my point? Just so that we could put in a little bit every year in case they were to need something for the dog that was unexpected? Is that, is that something that a revolving account could be created for legally?
For the audience, the question was, could we have a revolving account for some of the canine expenses? So that that money would keep accumulating if we weren't using it to be ready for if, if something occurred? I don't know, we could look into it? I do.
Under 53E and a half, you could do that.
We could.
The question's gonna be a funding source. That would be attributed to that account, but yes.
Well, we could move some of the funding to that instead of what it is today. Go into the revolving, be used for those expenses, whatever's left stays.
Yes, but typically a revolving fund is more of a, a business function. So, so typically there's a room reservation fees come in, they go in, but they cover building expenses related to the.
Because you're talking receipts, like doing, like in and out.
Right.
We're talking budgeted money staying, which is a little bit different. Maybe not a revolving in that case, but some of, is, maybe this is something to find out if we don't know, because I just thought of it when that question got asked. Is the canine covered under our insurance policies in line duty? Yes, right? So not that that solves everything, because there's still costs, but there is some coverage there to help with those sorts of situations.
And I, and I do wanna just also point out just real quick, because I just thought of it, is that we have a wonderful vet that gives us a huge.
Yeah, I was gonna say that discount was.
Discount, so.
Absolutely.
That's not always guaranteed, I mean.
Yeah.
The vet could say next year's our last year, so that's just something that we have to be mindful of, you know?
Do we have a donation account for the canine?
Yes.
We do?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And we have been receiving donations.
Nice.
Again, kudos to the canine officer and others who are putting that out there, promoting it.
That's all I had with, just a couple of simple questions. I do like the idea of planning, when Chief brought up the idea that there, you know, when changes happen, there's costs associated with those. And if we can, you know, even if it's just a thousand dollars, you know, here, you know, very small amounts. It's not, we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, to build up a little reserve account where maybe you've got 7, 8, 10,000 dollars. So should something happen, you have to, you know, people retire, people leave, new kennels need to be purchased. You have a, a funding source that's there, so.
Nice. Probably a worthwhile conversation between continuing appropriation, or is it just a capital plan? Or is it revolving? There's probably some different ways we could get, depending on what our goal is.
Good idea.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Sorry to spring that on you, I knew.
Hey, all we.
You just came to listen, I know.
No, all we asked for was whatever you know off the top of your head, as the department heads, that's all. That's why we didn't give you homework. Others? Anyone have anything otherwise?
I just have a question, I don't have my most current version of my notes in front of me. Part of what Chief Holtz expressed during budget, the original budget hearing, and he has it in his. Forgive me, his cover sheet with his budget, I can't think of the proper term for it. He said expressed some concerns over the amount funded for the academy and new equipment, and I don't recall if we adjusted that in any way.
So we still have it at 5,000?
Okay.
And then FY '23, we originally had that 15,300.
I guess my question would be, if we're wrapping up going line by line, do we now start talking about the areas of concern? Where we, I know we have some department heads who expressed concern over not having some things, and we have some department heads who were asking for a bit more.
I mean, I think we should. I think, you know, Scott talked on a few of them, we have some. What would be potentially significant cost drivers of things that have been cut and things that have been identified this year? And are we considering any of those and how would we get there if so? I think they're all. They're all on the table right now, so we can get to where we are tonight for. Coming to next week, and I also understand it's getting late and we keep everybody here all night and we have the ATM to review quickly as well, so. Let's see, anything else, bring them up, let's work through them now.
Are you talking line by line or just general things?
Anything, I mean, line by line, yes.
So I know on his narrative, Chief expressed concern that the cadet program was unfunded for this year. There was the academy and new hire amounts. I know, I believe it was the library wanted to increase a position, the assessors wanted to add a position. There was a position that was originally going to be done in the highway department, but that position was then rescinded because of funding problems. And so I don't know if we still feel that these are things that need to be done, some do, some don't, or none at all. I just haven't heard us talk about them and we definitely haven't talked, you know, we did ask our department heads to do the exercises of finding any sources of additional funding. And a few of them did that and we haven't touched or discussed any of those.
And I think in terms of like positions, increase in hours, the only ones that we've discussed so far was the school. Excuse me, was the one that the school identified. But I believe the library and assessors are in the budget. We didn't discuss whether that's what we all wanna do and the ones that got cut last year are not back in.
Correct, and I guess.
But I'm just saying, that's, that's what I recall from looking through it, is that some do include them?
Yep.
And others didn't even put them in there, some brought them up in the narrative but didn't include them, so.
Correct.
Just from an overall. Workforce standpoint, I think we should reconcile that. I, I like what you brought up.
Do you have a recall on what the line item was in FY '24 for those positions? I only ask because you might have been able to.
In '24? The cadet was 50, I wanna say?
Was it 50?
Yeah. Which. And I think it would also, if I recall, need the academy moved to 15, because I think it was.
Correct.
I think those two went together.
65, I had 65 written down.
That sounds right.
Combined the two of them.
So that, that I believe is roughly what the, you know, plus benefits, what that move was. There was a firefighter and that was discussed during the override as well.
The fourth, yeah.
Yep.
And that was a smaller amount at that time because he thought he could offset some of it, but in general, it would be about 50?
Approximately.
Plus benefits?
Plus benefits, yep.
It's probably a good number, but I don't recall what the highway one was, I'm guessing it was around the same. I mean, we're throwing around large number, you know, rough numbers, like.
Yeah, I, I couldn't, I put a placeholder, when I wrote down in my notes, I said, you know, there was a labor, you know, operator. I was at 65, I wasn't sure. 60, you have 60, okay, yeah, that's, correct, I thought it was close.
And some of these were adjusted for the new wage rates and some were probably not, so.
Correct.
Those two, you know, that's in there too, it could be 10%, give or take.
Yeah. Okay. But as far as play, yeah, it's 60. Say that again?
Let's just try a 57.
With the adjustments?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So 60. I just had to try it once.
This is the whole number.
All right.
And then what we have incorporated, I think is our. Look at that. I had that, but I lost it.
What did we say for fire, 60 plus bunnies?
We said 50, but I don't know if that was the right number.
I don't know, because his was.
He was absorbing some of that.
He was absorbing some into it, so it was hard to figure, I, I wanna say it was around 50, but. Ryan, you have the wage table in front of you?
I do.
You have it? New hire.
That's an F2, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, depending on the scale there, you're 40, you're 50. So call, round up 50.
That's what I figured.
And assessors was an additional position for 10 hours a week. And library, I believe, was an increase to an existing position.
That one was included though, correct?
Assessors, assessors in the library were included in the budget.
They were both included, those, those numbers are already in here.
They were presented, yeah, and, and presented numbers. And the assessors one was around 10, 12,000.
Yep. Fire, highway, police. I'm just talking about the ones that were not included in the FY '25 presented numbers.
For positions?
For positions.
Admin. That was the other one.
Yep.
And I don't remember what that number was. I think we were, let me look back in the tables here. Do you remember what grade we were thinking that might be, was that a C or a D somewhere in there?
When we, I, I wanna say it was, it was a C, because it was just gonna be the assistant level.
That's 50.
That's, okay.
Thought we had talked to potentially executive assistant and we didn't, I don't know if we, we didn't grade anything, so we were just.
No, we didn't.
We're starting somewhere.
And that would be 50 with benefits or without, I'm assuming?
Without.
These are all without benefits, right? All our numbers are without benefits.
But would that be a position with benefits?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. All of them are full-time.
Okay. Mackenzie? Would it be safe to assume that any other positions that the school is interested in hiring for is already included in the budgets?
I am not aware of any more positions that we need.
I am not aware of any more positions that we need. We've asked several times what was needed, and the response was the adjustment counselor slash BCBA slash psychologist. So that is the only position that we are aware of that is needed currently.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other questions or for me or?
Well, we'll think of them as soon as you walk out the door.
I know, but I have to teach little people tomorrow, so if it's at all possible that I go home.
No, go home, say you can teach your little people.
They will appreciate that. Thank you.
If we think of anything, we'll send it to you. No worries. Thank you. I think we're good.
I mean, in an ideal world, I'd love to be able to, you know, utilize the, that money and say that it's available. You know, you'd have to add in the five, there's five positions that we would be allocating for.
That's a lot.
Uh, it's 225 in salary alone, and then it'd be another, you'd have to earmark another 105 for benefits. So 330. Which even exceeds your highest number of.
My conservative highest?
Your conservative.
Not conservative, whatever you want to call it. I wasn't proposing we could do them all, but I just think we need to.
No, they're.
Just talk through that though, right? If we are funding some and what, which ones make sense.
Yeah, and I, and I brought those up in the start of my conversation. I wasn't aware of the change in the interest rate and the growth. I'm still hesitant to say, let's lock that in for wages and hire somebody based on those numbers, but it does, it could be a source in the near future if we can see some stabilized return. Uh, or, you know, where we can anticipate those funds. There, there are some of these that I would like to see sooner than later.
I agree.
So just because you guys did touch on it's getting late, just as a suggestion, the April 1st meeting was not necessarily a joint meeting. If it was at least included capital, maybe next week we come back and we look at these positions, and we look at potential additional revenue sources and plan on having that conversation that night. That's just an idea. I'm just going to throw it out there personally for myself. I believe the instructions to our department heads were to levally fund budgets and including additional hours for positions or creating new positions, to me, doesn't fall under the definition of a levally funded budget. I think all the department heads that submitted, whether it be in FY 24 or FY 25, all have incredibly valid reasons for why these positions are needed, but I think it's us. I think we have to do our due diligence of figuring out in what order that actually those need to be ranked and actually need to be assessed and looked at and determined where the highest priority is for those. And I don't know if we all want to do that this evening or necessarily feel we have the information to do that this evening.
I gently just bring it up. I don't pound on the table over here, but the assessors and the library people who were here to discuss this just left.
That's not our fault.
Well, it's not your fault they just left, but we said, yeah, these are included in the budget. And after they left, it's brought up, let's talk about it.
We've never said anything's guaranteed. This is still budget review. Those were proposed, just like the cadet was in the narrative, but not proposed, but said to be important, so.
I won't argue, I'm not trying to argue with you, just trying to point out it seems inopportune that this is brought up after they just walked out the door a minute ago. It's okay.
I didn't know they left, so.
Answer Deb's point, that's not level funding. Adding positions into the budget that aren't there.
So, I mean, I think Deb's point's spot on in terms of time. It's nine o'clock, and we've been going through this for a while. We've had good discussions about revenues that we didn't think about or have information on a week ago. We haven't discussed revenue generation at all and some of that piece. So unless others have something they want to cover specifically, I think coming back, we're going to finalize this next week. One way or another, we're going to come up with what it is. We're going to have a final school budget to review. Let's go through all of the increased positions, hours, proposed in the, in the proposals, not in the proposals that we know of and think are obviously all of value. Which ones should be in, how we get there? And the last of the balancing it, if you will, right? Is there any other piece on that that we didn't cover yet that we need to tonight? Obviously, anything about the budget, line item, any of these things are all on the table for next week too, so. Hearing none. We have the ATM draft. I won't go line by line. We will do that next week. If there's anything anyone had notes on, questions or comments?
Yes, and I might be mistaken, so capital, I'll need your help with this. I had thought when we discussed the extraction equipment for the fire department, our intent was to have that be an FY 24 from our capital stabilization. And if I, I just looked at it briefly, so if I'm wrong, please correct me. I believe, Brian, you put it in as an FY 25. Okay, so if that can just get moved to being an FY 24.
Still out of capital stabilization?
Yes.
The heading on that section is FY 25 continuing, isn't it?
It is.
Above Article 12, which I believe encompasses 13. Oh, okay, I follow you. Yeah, okay, never mind. I see.
You used to say FY 25 capital, but now you have multiple fiscal years, so it just is capital.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I was combining all those, but they're not.
Does that feel clear enough? Or is there, would you make it clearer?
I mean, the articles are FY 25, FY 24. I don't see an issue with it. So my hearing, we're going to move the extrication equipment up to 24?
I thought that was capital's intent when we had discussed that. Because we thought that was a safety concern, so the sooner he could have that funding available would be better.
Would I? Go ahead.
Now that we're having this conversation, that was tied to a conversation around the exhaust capture system.
Yes.
And the money being funds.
Yes.
And I'm realizing I don't have an article on here to return what's left of that balance.
And that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, and that goes to capital stable.
Somewhere where our capital stabilization deposit is, we want to add that in somehow there as another line to close that out, assuming it's fully paid and everything's done at this point. If everything isn't completely done, we can put it in at a future date if needed, but if he's all set, we can put that on there.
And Brian, I might be wrong, because I always get confused fiscal versus calendar. Article one, acceptance of the 2023 town report. Shouldn't that be acceptance of the 2024 town report?
Calendar 23.
Okay.
So let me clarify that.
You're right. It is confusing. Why do we put out a report for a calendar year when we operate on fiscal year? I will never understand, but I won't ask tonight.
Calendar year 2023.
Okay.
Anything else anyone noticed? I will ask, are we? Yes, yes.
Capital, the appropriation of wastewater capital projects. We got three different figures there. You got 63,000, 55,000, 75,000.
Page nine of the warrant.
Yep.
It's a good call.
Yep.
63 belongs to the next line, I think.
The answer is 63,600, and the last part is, the rationale is, I was tired.
Round up, round down, and get to the middle. We'll get there.
I will fix that.
It's all good.
Yes, it should all be 63,600.
Are we decided on the amount for capital stabilization? Because right now it's a multi-sourced article because it's not 747, it's 7, it's 750. Are we changing it to 747? Are we leaving it 750? Do we care right now? Can always change it again next week, but if we know.
I like it clean, that it's just for, we had talked about it coming from the free cash, and the free cash was 747. It makes it a clean article. It's one funding source.
I am not going to argue with you over 2,800 bucks.
Correct, that's, you know.
So deposit capital service 747.
110.
All for free cash.
I will argue over the 110 dollars.
I will too.
Sure, 1, 747, 110.
Thank you.
If that's truly what we have left. If it's something different, then you adjust. Any others on there at this point? The other thing we'll bring next week is we will have the detail on the transfers for wages from the wage continuing appropriation we put aside last year of 120,000, where we need to move that into, which will therefore make the year-over-years and the wages look more appropriate because it will adjust this year, and then the increases that you see won't look as significant in most, most areas as they do today. Because that money's there to be moved, so. We'll have that proposal, and that needs to be a joint vote to move it, so if we like what it is, then we can make that move.
Yes, sir.
Before you leave this topic, can we discuss the debt exclusion of the capital outlay expenditure? Article?
Can you help me with the page that was on? Is that like the bottom?
It's page 14.
Thank you.
Of the warrant, right?
Of the warrant.
Of the warrant, yes, thank you, sorry for the.
That's okay.
Page 78 of our packet, page 14 of the one. So either my memory was a little cloudy or the conversation was maybe a little interchangeable, but I remember at the last meeting, hearing it referred to as a capital expenditure and also hearing it as a debt exclusion. Those are, while they're related, two separate things, and so I want to get clear. I've so far drafted as a capital expenditure, but if you want it as a debt exclusion, I need to change the language.
Debt exclusion.
Debt exclusion.
A three-year term.
Three-year term.
Yeah.
Yes, because the capital's a one-time, right?
Correct.
Yeah, no, this is a three-year debt exclusion.
Yeah, I will make those revisions. And I need, if that is the wish of the select board, I need you all to vote, to ask the town clerk to put that question on the election ballot at least 35 days in advance. So that clock is getting close, even May 6.
Does that language need to be voted or the, or the wish? The specific language, right, or no?
I mean, the more specific we are, I think, the better.
The better, okay.
But, but it's going to be a debt exclusion of a three-year term for the amount of 3.4 million dollars.
Correct. I don't know if we need plus interest, but yeah.
And applicable interest.
Because it's going to be significant, yes. So we'll need to get that language together to do as well. That is our wish, yes?
And yes, and Monday satisfies the 35 days still, yes, May 8th.
May 8th is your town meeting. Your election is May 6th.
It's like about the day, yeah, it's like a day.
It's one, one extra day.
Jackie?
I'm assuming since you're doing a debt exclusion, you're going to want the numbers to be updated that was presented, was it a year ago on, because the numbers used then were fiscal year 23 numbers and not fiscal year 24 numbers, so they don't have the big drop in the mountain project. So I can run that scenario again if you want. Do you want it for Monday?
I don't think we need it for Monday.
Not for Monday, but we'll need it before. Yeah, because it's, it's not going to go into the article information. It's just too expansive, but we'll need it for town meeting.
And you won't need it for the ballot question?
No, thank you. It won't change our, I mean, that's what we're going to put forth, so.
Just for town.
It'll be just for informational for people when they're there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Others? So we'll have that language to give that direction as well for Monday. Okay. We'll also have Church Street Bridge Engineering Services proposal for the additional services for the tip process in the state.
Okay.
For the, for the grant funding process, however to word that, but there's additional costs involved and I'm working through this process, so we'll have that to look at.
Is that something you're going to want FinCom to weigh in on?
I don't know yet how. I haven't even had a chance to look at the funding and if we have some, enough in the account or any of that yet, so I'll say yes, because I don't know yet.
Okay, if it is, could you just get us the information before Monday, so we have time to look it over?
That's a reasonable request.
Before Saturday?
I said Monday, I was being generous.
I know. Okay, anything else? I think we covered everything on the agenda. Anything else on the warrant?
Okay, I have one more question.
You can.
In Articles 10 and 11.
Time's up.
There you go. I'm done.
10 and 11.
Change in format?
Okay.
Are you okay with that? I do need to change that. So.
Yes, you do.
Council's been asking us for years to restructure our water and wastewater articles to balance revenue with anticipated expenditures.
To show it?
Right. And so for the water example, I took the approach that we use annually for deriving the water rates when you all hold the water rate adjustment meeting. What wasn't factored in before was the investment income, so that moved us up, so I need to adjust. If that's okay.
If the format's okay?
The format and then to propose it as retained earnings, the balance.
I mean, it is.
That's how I viewed it. I just want to make sure you're okay with this presentation.
I am. You guys?
And I want to be clear, they're estimates. Revenue is going to be generated based on gallons used, and so there's no way to be precise. But we can look at averages and we can adjust rates.
Any issues with it? Concerned with it?
None.
Good with it?
Yep.
You'll show investment income too, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
On the, on the accounts?
Right. That's how we were doing it when we were setting the, the rates.
That's fine.
Okay. Do you want the same thing mimicked in wastewater?
Just what you did minus the investment.
I have not included investment income on that one yet.
I would.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's part of the estimated revenues, right, so we should. I don't know if I go estimating four and a half percent, but you do whatever you think is the right estimate.
Okay.
Based on what we know, best information we have.
And then whatever increases that.
They're estimates.
Goes to retained earnings.
Yep.
Okay.
Any others?
I think those are the only changes that I had questions on.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn to all meetings?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in paper? Thank you, everyone. Linda, Linda did. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.